Okay, today's date, October 25, 2018, Board of Commissioners meeting.
A meeting to order while Gail wakes up. I think we could dispense for the pledge for allegiance this morning since it's a special meeting. And move on to the introductory comments. I don't suppose we're taping the meeting or videotaping either.
Yes, we are.
Oh, we are? Oh, okay.
Did we just take a knee? Is that why?
All right. Any additions to the agenda? Okay. It is the Robert Walder Show.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners, for the record, Bob Walder, Planning Director. And so the first item before you today is the recommendation from the Yumitilla County's statewide Transportation Improvement Fund Advisory Committee, otherwise known as STIF Advisory Committee. And this is for the STIF formula funds for 2019 through 2021. If the recommendation is approved, Yumitilla County will submit a STIF plan for approval to ODOT and the Oregon Transportation Commission. And the deadline for this first round is November 1st, and I'll be working with our Chair Teresa Dutcher to make sure we're able to hit that November 1st deadline for the submittal of the plan. Just a little bit of a reminder about what the STIF funds, the formula funds are for. STIF resources may be used for public transportation purposes to support effective planning, deployment, operation, and administration of STIF-funded public transportation programs. These uses include, but are not limited to, creating new transit systems and services, maintaining or continuing systems and services, creating plans to improve services, and to meet match requirements for state and federal funds. And as part of the administrative rules, Yumitilla County, which is the qualifying entity, was required to form an advisory committee. And so some of those members are here today, but over the course of the last two months, advisory committees worked very hard and dedicated really a lot of time. We've met five times, and they developed their final recommendation on Monday, the 22nd. The advisory committee meeting minutes from the last two months are all on our New Transit webpage. So that's another thing that we got going here recently. But for your review, I provided a document that summarizes each of the projects and presents an overview of the projects that the advisory committee recommends funding. So I'll kind of show you what's in there. The first page is just a summary, which includes what our estimated formula fund distribution from the state will be. So the state, ODOT, developed this using existing payroll data. And they gave us a very conservative estimate as to what, how much funds Yumitilla County can expect to receive over the course of the next three years. As a reminder, for 2019, we're only collecting payroll on two quarters of the year. So that's why that number is a little bit less. But you can see over the course of the three-year period that by 2021, we're expecting to receive over $1 million in transit funds. I also included 130% estimate. So this would be like best case if ODOT really underestimated what we might receive. That's those numbers below there. I want to take a minute to talk about sub-allocation methods. And this, the sub-allocation refers to the amount of payroll generated in each community. And the rules basically say that the distribution of funds should align closely with those numbers. So I highlighted the language from the rule there in orange. But we also received a breakdown of payroll data for the whole county from the Oregon Employment Department. And that's actually on the last page of your packet. It looks like this. And it provides a breakdown for each city within Yumitilla County. And over on the right column there, there's a breakdown of what percentage each county generated. And this gets a little difficult because, as you can see, some of our smaller, this only includes areas inside the city limits. So we know there's a segment of payroll data generated outside of city limits. And so it gets a little bit difficult. But also, some of the real small cities only, don't even generate a full percentage point of payroll for the county as a whole. But the main point I want to make here is that the rules say you should use this as a starting point when selecting your projects. And it should be somewhat close to what the cities or the transit providers are receiving and being selected for projects. But then we also need to factor in those other criteria, whether or not we're serving, you know, low-income populations, people with disabilities, things like that. But ODOT has said over and over, that's the starting point. They want us to follow those sub-allocation methods.
If I can interrupt just a second. For example, shows Hermiston at 25%. That doesn't necessarily mean that 25% of the dollars have to be allocated to Hermiston, does it? Doesn't it, can it be interpreted that, for example, intercity routes would benefit multiple cities and so on?
Yeah, so what ODOT expressed to me was this really needs to be used as a starting point. So if ODOT, or if Hermiston was requesting a certain amount, and that was about 25%, we need to start, probably select that project as a starting point. Keep in mind that I think over 30% is generated in unincorporated Yumitilla County. So we know we have like Lamb West and other facilities that are located outside city limits. Roughly about 40% from my calculations is generated in the west part of the county. You can see Pendleton is the largest. They generate close to 30% of Yumitilla County's payroll. But again, it's just, they gave us those numbers just to use as a starting point. So for this first round, each public transportation service provider submitted their project request to the county on October 5th. And we received 11 different requests for projects from four transit providers and then one qualifying entity, which is Yumitilla County. For 2019, there was actually more money requested than the $412,000 that's available. So the committee wanted to make, had to make some decisions on which projects to fund for 2019. For 2020 and 2021, there was more than enough money to fully fund all the project requests if we chose to do that. And if that's approved by the QE. So I guess quickly I can go through each of the projects really quick if you'd like me to. Just give a brief overview on the decisions of the advisory committee. So the first project is for, submitted by Yumitilla County. And that is for a transit coordinator. And the recommendation of the advisory committee was to fully fund that request for all three years. This position, as we've talked about, would really be working to coordinate the transit system in the county, working with all the transit providers, helping to plan that regional connectivity that we've talked a lot about, helping with development of plans, eventually maybe even assisting Robert with the STF committee and moving that forward. They'd also be the liaison to our advisory committee in helping with, later this year or early next year, we'll be working on discretionary grants for the transit company. So that's the first project. The next one was submitted by Kayak Public Transit. And this is for the Hermiston-Bortman Connector Project. If you remember, a week and a half ago, we met with Morrell County Commissioners and reviewed the transit development strategies. This project actually comes out of those transit development strategies. And Kayak took a little different approach. Instead of submitting five different projects, they submitted five tasks all under one project. So the tasks included planning, capital, operations, administration. And then the other capital you see there is to update their bus stock. So the recommendation, again, of the advisory committee was to fully fund all the tasks associated with that project. The next one is submitted by the City of Hermiston. It's the West End Workforce Demand Ride Cooperative. And Hermiston also took a little different approach. They submitted the same project three times, but it's a scalable version. So they submitted, if the committee was to fully fund it, they submitted 100%. If we were to fund 80% and then 60%. So that was a little different strategy. It's the same project. And so our objective was to pick just one of those, one of those for each year. And the recommendation of the advisory committee was for 2019 to fund that project at 80% and then to fund it fully in 2020 and 2021. The next submittal was from the City of Pendleton. And they submitted three project requests, I believe. The first one is for the Letter Bus Deviated Fixed Route System. And the city's looking, or has approval to expand their Dial Ride and Elite Transit Program into a Deviated Fixed Route. I actually heard the commercial on the radio for this the other day. So they've had a population that's demonstrating a larger need for transit. And so that's what this would serve. The recommendation, again, was to fully fund that for all three years. The next project request from City of Pendleton was for administration. And so currently, they do not fund an administrative person to handle transit. Ms. Carter provides that in addition to her financial responsibilities of the city. And so as we implement a lot of these new programs, we have to remember that there has to be someone that can implement them. So if we're expanding these services, it puts an additional burden on these jurisdictions like our own to help administer those programs. So the recommendation was to fund that for all three years. And then the last project is for MATCH for their 5311 and 5310 funds. And that'll help supplement their, and expand their current service transit to the general public, providing Dial Ride, meal sites, specific event transportation, youth transit programs, and serve ADA populations and seniors. And again, the committee recommended fully funding that for all three years. And then the final set of projects we have, we received five requests from City of Milton-Freewater Transit. The first is for expanding their service for a fixed route bus. This would extend their service that they're able to offer currently, Monday to Friday, which is four trips, and then add Saturday service on a fixed route bus. The committee recommended fully funding that for all three years. The next request was for an ADA elevator at City of Milton-Freewater at the City Hall Building. And this one probably had the most discussion out of all the projects. Certain advisory committee members felt that it really, they didn't necessarily see the tie to, that this project had to transit. However, it was noted that the project is included in our coordinated human services plan. And the city's actually received 31% MATCH from FTA, which is the Federal Transit Administration. So there may be some tie to transit. I'll leave that up to you to decide. But I'm also told that, I think the total project, and Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, is about a $700,000 project. And the city, yeah, I believe the city is trying to come up with about $500,000. So it's a big investment. The advisory committee recommended not funding it for 2019 and only funding half of the project, or funding it for 2020. So partially funding that project. And so because they didn't fund that, and they only funded Hermiston at 80% for this first year, we were able to come in under budget, or under what we have for, available for funds. The next project by Milton-Freewater is for a transportation assistant. And so again, this is for funding to help employ a portion of a transportation assistance salary. And again, like I said before, if they're expanding their service, currently they, Milton-Freewater, their Economic Development Director oversees transit. So they're looking to offload some of that work, I believe. And so they voted to fully fund that. The next one from Milton-Freewater is for limited taxi service to and from work. And this would be a taxi service that provides transportation for employees to and from work. The hours would be limited between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and then 3:00 and 6:00 in the evenings, and run Monday through Friday. The committee recommended funding that completely. And then this last one here is what's called a system design plan. And because Milton-Freewater is located, or they're included as part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Walla Walla Valley, that MPO that we talk about occasionally, they're required to apply for their funds through the FTA. And so the FTA has come back to them and said, you really need to do a system design plan, which would ensure that you're not overlapping service with other transit providers that are doing the same thing and really improve efficiency. We took this idea to Frank Thomas, our Regional Transit Coordinator at ODOT. And he says, well, that's probably a good thing, and they would need to do that. But why don't we, he recommended we do a whole system design plan for all of Yumitilla County, similar to the transit development strategies or travel shed analysis we did that was focused on the west part of the county and Morrell County. Except this would be for the whole county and also incorporate parts of the MPO going into Walla Walla County, Columbia County, et cetera. We went ahead and the advisory committee decided to leave this project in here. But we understand we could, the county, if they wanted to make an application for a discretionary grant later on this next year, it's likely we would be eligible to apply for that. But we wanted to leave that in here as a contingency because if we aren't successful in discretionary grant, Milton-Freewater will still need the system design plan to meet their federal requirements. So that is a summary of all the projects. Any questions about the individual projects that I can try and answer?
So there is no South County?
There is not yet. I think one of the goals of having a transit coordinator and then developing a countywide system design plan would be to help enhance, do some planning that would help enhance those connections to Ukiah and John Day over into Union County, La Grande. Kayak already offers some service to Union County. We also know that Grant County has a busload of folks that come over on a pretty regular schedule to get to medical needs in Walla Walla and here in Pendleton. So our hope is with, if we're successful in getting this discretionary grant, our Yumitilla County's new transit coordinator could help with the planning on that and enhance those services for other areas, more rural areas like Ukiah and Helix.
So it's on your radar screen?
It is.
I don't know that there'll ever be a time when we could provide employment-related transportation, which would mean daily service. But perhaps we could, in the same way we provide services in Milton-Freewater, it might be something available one or two days a week that people could utilize.
Well, it might be considerable also when Union County does their planning. I know Commissioner Howard is very interested in providing some kind of workforce transportation back and forth. But I don't know how much money they have or what they're planning to do. They obviously did not come to this committee meeting and make any presentations.
Kayak does some of that now. But I don't know how.
Frequent, I'm not sure.
I think workforce and education would be prohibitive in the South County. But on a very limited basis, if you, you know, if you're elderly and didn't have a car, but knew that on Tuesdays, you could get, come in in the morning and go home at night, that's useful.
Right, yeah, especially if we're trying to use these dollars to target, target some of those disabled or senior populations.
Doesn't Grant County have a shuttle that provides transportation from Grant County to Walla Walla Prevention?
They do, yeah.
It has a name too. I can't remember the name.
Robert, do we still have the special transportation, bringing people from Ukiah?
They are still providing service, yes.
Okay. How often does that happen?
It's on an as-needed basis. It's provided by volunteers in Ukiah. And I believe they probably do 10 to 15 truck trips a month, average. And they travel a lot of places, Walla Walla, Portland a couple of times, I mean, where they need to go.
And then, Bob, how close are we to MPO designation for all the outlined communities in the west end of the county? When you look at Echo and Stanfield and Yumitilla and Hermiston, and even though it's in Morrell County, hearing and...
Yeah. My guess is we, obviously it'd depend on the results of the upcoming census.
Right.
But I've heard rumors that we're very close to actually having another MPO in Yumitilla County, which would be interesting, so.
Because the threshold's only 55,000.
I believe so, yeah. And so given the rapid expansion in the west part of the county, I would anticipate we're not far from that.
I never imagined using public transportation until I found I couldn't drive for a while. And the elite taxi option was good.
Yeah. So if you go back to the first page on the funding summary, you can see the recommendation of the STIF Advisory Committee. For 2019, we're looking at just under $400,000. 2020, $692,000. And 2021, $793,000. So we have remaining STIF funds for each of the three years. And actually, a pretty good chunk of money, over a half million dollars, will roll over to the next formula fund cycle. And so if we don't, ODOT says if you don't use those funds, they will carry over and you'll have them at your disposal for the next round. The advisory committee has also decided they would like to explore a policy that would basically have a requirement that a certain percentage of our STIF funds go into a reserve in the event that, you know, the economy has a downturn and people are relying on public transit more in those times, that we would still be able to do some meaningful projects. Also, for the first few years, a lot of the funding requests are going to be to start new service. But as time goes on, we're going to be needing to purchase new buses and update things. And so if, and there may be other special, larger projects like transfer stations and things like that that are costly capital projects. So the committee felt it would be important to have some reserves available as a contingency or rainy day fund in the future. So we're working, we haven't got a policy developed yet. Doug said that'd probably be the best way to go if, is to develop a policy around that. They're looking at establishing basically a floor. So say, basically that we would need $400,000 or something in our reserve fund at all times, or it wouldn't be allowed to drop below that level. So they're exploring some different options.
Bob, if somebody came to the committee with the most brilliant idea of transportation that's ever come along, they would not have an opportunity until 2022. Is that correct? There's no way to crack into the reserves?
For the STIF formula funds, that's my understanding, yes. That's why I think, you know, ODOT wants us to use these planning documents that have been developed to be able to forecast, you know, those types of situations. So, yeah, we won't be meeting again on formula funds until 2020, 2020, I believe. To start the planning process all over again for the next, by any of them. However, there are opportunities for discretionary fund, which those are the projects that really intended to enhance regional connectivity. And then also the inter-community fund is in, I believe 4% of the dollars are in that fund for the whole state. And that's a competitive grant across the whole state that would look to enhance transit on a statewide level. So we've talked about, you know, closing those gaps that exist in transit. If someone wanted to get from Boise, Idaho to Portland, Oregon, there's some gaps in the system. So those types of things will be funded through that.
Won't be siphoned for 205, huh?
I don't think so.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the idea, the grand idea. But I think also, for the sake of the riders and the sake of the programs when there's equipment and stuff involved, an element of stability would seem valuable too.
Yeah. So that's, pretty much concludes my, concludes my presentation.
We have two members of your committee here.
We do, yeah.
Could we meet them and have them?
Yeah, would you guys like to answer? Go ahead. Teresa?
Teresa Dutcher. Just retired from the City of Milton-Freewater. Hit that age 65. And Chair of the Committee.
And Linda Carter, Finance Director for the City, and I'm Katie Ossoff.
Teresa's going to be helping us finish out our STIF planning process and get that plan submitted to ODOT by November 1st, assuming you approve the recommendation. And then she's also agreed to help us and Susan Bauer in training our new transit coordinator when that person comes onboard for a while. And she has a wealth of transit experience, so we're excited to have her, be able to use her as a resource for this.
Mr. Chair, in the matter of approval of the projects and STIF plan, I'm with approval of Order BCC 2018-073.
And I'll second that, but I did have a question for Teresa. The City Hall is still using the chairlift to get patrons from the ground level up to the counter at this time?
They are.
Okay.
When I used to sit there by the chairlift, I think the most horrible sound in the world is when somebody's trying to get off of it.
is when somebody's trying to get off of it and falls on the stairs. I learned to absolutely despise that stairlift. It's, yeah, it's hard to be in that office area there by the stairlift. But, but yes, they do have it, and yes, it can be used. And lots of times, I mean, if they'll ask, all of us, all of the employees at City Hall are trained to help people on that chairlift. And if they use it like it's supposed to be used, it works.
It looks a little wiggly.
It's slow. We always tell them that we, we used to joke about it and tell them that it's slow, so we don't give a whiplash coming around the corner. But, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good product if it's used appropriately. I mean, there's a seatbelt on it, there's a, there's a footrest on it. It twists to get up on a level floor. The problem is, is they get up to the top and they think it's done. Instead of twisting to go out to the level floor, they try to get off on the stairs, on that uneven level, and that's when, and they're at the top of the stairs, and that's awful. It's, it's, yeah.
And they're steep stairs.
Very steep stairs.
Yes, they are steep stairs.
What, what was the total cost? Did I hear you say 700,000?
For the...
Elevator.
Laura was here the other day. She's more involved in it now. I kind of got out of it in June when I, when I retired, but she, she had said in our meeting that the estimated total cost now is, is at 700,000.
And that would take patrons clear to the third floor that the city wants to remodel?
That is to get patrons to the third floor as well, yes. And they, and they want to open up the third floor for several things, public meetings and stuff on the third floor.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? You all, fair to say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
So we will, Doug has an order and we'll get that finished, and Teresa and I will get the plan submitted to ODOT for approval.
Have we done one, two, and three, or one?
That was just one. So, the second one is...
Wishful thinking, yeah.
The second item is more of a housekeeping issue, I would say. We have a coordinated human services plan. It was originally adopted back in, what was it, Doug?
2007.
2007. Since then, there were a couple of updates, 2014, and then most recently, 2016, I believe. We had a final date of August 2016. We went back and looked at minutes from the STF committee. It appears they approved it, but unfortunately, we never formally adopted at the board, adopted the document at the board level. And so, in order to be eligible for STIF funds, you have to have, these projects have to come out of an adopted plan. So, I think we would probably have been okay, but we just want to make sure that we've crossed our Ts and not our Is. And so, we're recommending formal adoption of that plan.
Did you see the note that requires you to read this aloud?
I'll spare you that.
It doesn't say there has to be a quorum present.
There wouldn't be, but since I got through. Do we have a motion?
So move.
All, fair to say aye?
Aye.
Now, where are we?
Now, the third item I have is the adoption of the transit development strategies. This is the plan that Kittleson, the consultant, developed, and you all listened to Matt Hugard's presentation about a week and a half ago. And so, this adopts that plan. Again, the focus of this was on that Yumatilla, Moro County connection primarily. And one of the projects, Kayak's project, actually comes out of this plan. And so, this would adopt that plan. I just got an email from Moro County this morning, and they adopted it yesterday as well, so we'll be covered there.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, in the matter of Transit Development Strategy Plan adoption, I move approval of order BCC 2018-074.
Second. Fair to say aye?
Aye. Thank you. I'm done now.
Thank you to our guests. You're certainly welcome to stay. We have a centralizing agenda.
We'll go back to work.
All right. For sick leave donation policy change, Jennifer?
Gentlemen, before you today is an update to policy 4.3, which are leave and attendance policies. And the only change to this policy at this time is to update the hardship language to include the allowance of exempt employees to donate a maximum amount of 24 hours of sick leave in any calendar year to another employee's qualifying hardship request. This had come to the board several years ago and was not adopted at the time, so we're making another stab at it. This falls in line exactly with the courthouse union policy. And we have made a little bit of changes to the procedural updates, but that is only just our current practice.
So, Doug, will you give us background of reasons we did not, because it did come before us?
Right. It was quite some time ago with a different word composition. It was considered whether to allow exempts to donate sick leave as well as vacation leave, which is the current policy. At that time, the board was not favorable towards that. It was mostly an economic reason that I recall that they felt that sick leave that has accumulated by exempts probably is not a true liability for the county and because it probably wouldn't be utilized when those employees, or it would not be paid out when the employees left. And for that reason, they thought, well, rather than make that a, that liability a certainty, they did not follow through with adding exempts, to allow exempts to donate sick time.
I think we asked about this in our staff meeting the other day, but what effect does this have on the upcoming state law that we have to adhere to within the next five years?
Pay equity?
Pay equity.
None? Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't have any impact.
Okay. Other questions? For a motion?
I move approval.
Second. All, fair to say aye?
Aye.
Oh, effective date? Can we make it effective today? Did you?
November 1st.
November 1st? Okay, thank you. Item number five, what?
Number four.
Number first, number first, for utilization on November 1st donation.
Well, if you wanted to, you could make it effective today.
It doesn't need to be.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
You can't.
Wouldn't it?
Oh, okay, so, okay. So, yeah, for implementation purposes, it'd be November 1st.
Okay, thank you. All right, item five.
The next item is a, comes before us as a request for a letter of support for the Tourism Committee's application for Travel Oregon Rural Tourism Studio. And I've asked Carrie Walsley to briefly describe that.
Good morning. Yes, as Commissioner Alfred just stated, I care to ask for a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners. A little bit of background on this process. Last spring, in, working with some of the people interested in tourism in Western Yumatilla County, Freddie Pedro is from Mabit, they had asked, or they had inquired about some of the things that Travel Oregon can do for rural areas, and to have what's called a rural tourism studio. And what that is, is where, through an application process, they come in, and if you are selected, they come in and help you develop a destination or product development within the communities, there are stakeholders that are involved, so it's a completely community-oriented effort to kind of help develop a tourism product. And as you know, Pendleton has a beautiful tourism draw here. They're the anchor for Yumatilla County, but it kind of lacks in other areas of the county. So, and together, as part of my plan in tourism, in helping communities that kind of struggle on tourism, and we move forward with the application process. We were selected through the first process this past spring to go on to the second process, and that's where we are at now. And I have previously attended a couple tourism studios. One was a bicycling studio in Hepner a number of years ago, which helped development, developed the Blue Mountain scenic bikeways. And then in Condon, four years ago, for one of the first agritourism development studios that Travel Oregon puts on. And in 2016, because of attending that Condon, I worked with Eastern Oregon Visitors Association to get that for Oregon's record country, which is Yumatilla and Moro County. We've been very successful on that. We have developed two brochures between the two farm loops within the county, and we've done signage, and now we're working on Wi-Fi and signage. I was excited about the agritourism studio because it's a good set for the west side of the county. There's a lot of product over there and a lot of startup businesses or value added to that. We still struggle on that side of the county with, with a destination or other products. So, what Travel Oregon does is look at the investment in, into the area, the regional capacity, how it flows into the other communities that are outside. Historically, Travel Oregon has done a couple countywide efforts, but has centered them more locally, like South Lincoln County, which was two communities. They've done single communities like Oak Ridge in Southern Oregon to help develop a trail. So, we felt that kind of a copacetic product for West Yumatilla County was the four communities, of Hermiston, Yumatilla, Echo, and Stanfield, which have all submitted letters of support on this project. I'm just the driver of this. This is their, what they would like to have put together, what they see tourism development in, in West Yumatilla County as being. On a regional capacity, we will be inviting all the other communities between Wardman, Hepner, Pendleton, and Freewater to come in. I have received a letter of support through Eastern Oregon Visitors Association for this project as well. Because if they're coming into one place, we want to move them on to be, you know, filtered through the area. We don't need to just keep them in one space. There's a lot to offer in our area, so we enjoy sharing that. So, I am here today to ask for a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners to submit with the application that is due November 2nd to Travel Oregon.
How much is the grant?
What's that?
What is the amount of the grant funding?
Okay, so, the tourism studio is not a grant. We go through a process of development, but it does enable us, if we are chosen, to submit an application for a grant for development within a year's term. I am applying for the Rural Tourism Studio, which is a four to six month process that we have to have a sustained eight to 12 member board from the communities to, to work this. There are different studios that they do award. Another one is an experience studio, which is a one to two day process, which we could end up with. And then there's called a destination development, destination management, which, places that have already a tourism product, and sometimes see some of the negative effects of too much traffic or too many, you know, people, a problem to have, but it still does exist. And so, there's another studio that, that deals with that as well. But I'm helping the west county apply for a, the big one, the rural tourism studio.
Principally, this is in-kind help from Travel Oregon.
It is, it is.
There's not a cost to the county?
No, there is not.
What about, is this an agritourism grant?
No, this is not, this is, one of the, the rural aspect of this is helping rural communities development, develop their tourism product. We've already had the agritourism part come through, and it's been working beautifully for us.
But that includes all the county, doesn't it?
That, that, yeah, those are all the county. And, and this will, like I had mentioned prior, I have attended other rural tourism studios that were not in our area, because there's a lot of takeaway that, that you can bring back to your community and work with your stakeholders on that as well. So this will help whatever our local stakeholders deem they would like. It could work on culture and heritage, outdoors, the cycling, which would all dovetail beautifully into the already existing agritourism product that we already have.
Is this in conjunction with Travel Oregon Group?
This is through Travel Oregon, yes.
I only ask that because I, I had asked Commissioner Alfred yesterday. I get a little nervous when we start focusing on one part of the county and...
Understand, understand. But as, like the EOBAs and some of our regional people, as long as we open it up to the existing areas, that they can come in and take away from it what they need for their areas. So, everybody benefits. It's, it's not just centered on, on one little spot. It's for the development of, of a region-wide program.
Other comments, questions?
I, I have none. Chair, new approval?
Second. All, fair to say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any other items? Any comments, commissioners?
The kids are, my kids are coming today with grandkids, and they're going to spend the weekend. I've talked to Melinda, so I will leave at noon today and be gone tomorrow.
Okay. None for me.